Good evening, hello everybody. Sorry, we're having a few technical difficulties tonight, but I think we've worked them out. For anybody who needs to come up and speak tonight, normally, we try to make it a little more convenient for you, but we're having some technical difficulties, so if you do need to speak, if you could come over to that microphone that's pointed in your direction, that would be really helpful. So, welcome. It is September 4th, 2014, and this is our first televised meeting of the school year, and we're here with our new superintendent, Mr. Adams. It's very exciting. We want to thank both Mr. Lynn and Mr. Adams for stepping up to apply for this position. And how lucky are we that we have you both sitting here with us, and along with Barbara Durand. It's very, very excited about this year, and welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for stepping up to lead us. We read our vision statement at every meeting. "The Ashland Public Schools is committed to being at the forefront of student achievement by preparing students to be college and career-ready while promoting independence, respect, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed as problem solvers in the 21st century." This meeting is being recorded by WACA cable TV. This evening, we start in an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. We are opening with an opportunity for the public to be heard. We will have recognition of achievement for the retirees. We will have a review of the minutes, our student representative update, our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director of curriculum reports, our gifts and donations, and our special topics this evening will be a discussion and vote on naming of school properties, Dr. Ruth Field, discussion naming of school facilities requests, discussion and vote prioritizing athletic fields repairs, discussion and vote review of liaison and subcommittee assignments, discussion and vote appointment to accept board, discussion and vote on the Ashland educators' contract, discussion and vote on the nurses' contract, discussion and vote on the secretary's contract, discussion on the school committee meeting schedule, action items and future agenda items, school committee member updates. Then we'll adjourn, but I will be looking for a motion to add Mr. Kira to the agenda this evening to give us an update on some first grade transitions, so if I can have a motion to add Mr. Kira at number three.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we likely will have to move number six, the Ashland Educators Association contract, to a little bit later in the evening if Mr. Skjavi is not here when we get to that point. So, we will start with any opportunity for the public to be heard. Is there anybody that wants to say anything this evening? Right, okay. Seeing none, we have recognition of achievement.
At this point, I'd like to turn, we have a number of retirees throughout the summer and even upcoming this year, turn the floor over to Mr. D. Geralamo from the middle school to start with our presentation.
And, just here, out this way.
Yes, please. Sorry for the inconvenience.
That is okay. So, we have, the middle school has three people to recognize this evening, so. The first is Olympio Pocus. Olympio worked at the Dennison Corporation for 26 years before beginning at the Ashland Public School system in August of 2002, where he finished his career working nights here at the middle school. With, speaking with coworkers about Olympio, I think they refer to him as, kind, reliable, a good worker, and I know he enjoyed being part of the team. We were having a conversation, and, you know, part of that retirement, he was saying he misses the job, misses being here, misses the people he works with, and I think that says something about Olympio, and it says something about the relationship they had while he worked here at the middle school, and schools really all over the district. I think, you know, he worked in just about every school at one point, although he just finished here at the middle school. Some of them also made comments about those difficult days, he was willing to pitch in, snow days, here, right here, on time, working hard on the hardest days to work all year. So, coworkers obviously thought a lot of him, and certainly, we're going to miss him, you know, so it's for this reason that at this time, I'd like to congratulate Olympio on his retirement, thank him for the years of service, not just in the middle school, but for all the schools in the district, and we wish him all the best, and thank him again. So, thank you, Olympia. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. We have a prize for you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate it.
Hopefully, I don't have to give a speech because I, I don't know where I put it.
Right there.
It's fortunate for everyone. Thank you so much. It's actually been, you know what, it's been fast. It really has. Time has gone really fast, and it's true, I will miss the group. Have a great group over here at the middle school. Although I travel through all the other school systems, I've been here probably the longest, so, over at the high school, for a while. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
The next person the middle school would like to recognize tonight is Betsy Backstrand. Betsy began her career as secretary of Ashland Middle School in 1980, spanning the career so that'd be 33 years, so we're looking at three-plus decades of service at Ashland Middle School. And, talking to staff, and, you know, talking to members of the community, Betsy was the face of the middle school, of that main office, students, parents, staff members when they walked into the school. So, that's, that's a long time, and we certainly appreciated her service. Went talking to a couple of teachers who had worked with her for years and years and years. I got a lot of quotes and comments about, you know, dealing with the tantrums, the tears, the shouting, and that was just the staff. In all seriousness, the staff, you know, obviously appreciated her support, used her as a resource, as much as to she built the connections with students, and again, was the face of that office for over 30 years, so. Certainly, on, and I should mention too, one more thing, just a little footnote, in terms of the DC trip, she attended the Washington DC trip over 20 years and organized it for many years as well. So, it wasn't just being the face of the office, it was her involvement in other areas. So, certainly, for the 33-plus years and all her contributions to Ashland Middle School, to the staff and students, on behalf of myself, on behalf of Ashland Middle School teachers and the school community, congratulations to you, Betsy, and we wish you the best of luck.
[applause] Thank you.
And the third person I'd like to talk about tonight is Manny Machado. Manny's over there. Manny's career also began 2002 at the Mendez School. Most of Manny's years at the Ashland Public Schools were actually working at Mendez, both in days and nights as well, although he finished up working the last couple of years here at Ashland Middle School, working nights. Some of the same things, you know, it's funny, talking about Olympio, and the same thing, the coworkers, when they talk about Manny, in terms of working with the group, being a great sort of teammate, and really contributing, being kind, and whatever needed to be done, Manny was there to get the job done. On a side note too, I was talking to Manny, he's retiring to San Diego, California.
Wow.
His wife is already there, and he said he's probably gonna follow her, so.
[laughter]
In all seriousness, though, once again, you know, for Manny's contributions to both Mendez, especially in us, the last couple of years, for his contributions, for his efforts towards our school and school community, we appreciate his efforts, we appreciate his hard work, and we wish him all the best moving forward in San Diego, California. Congratulations, Manny. [applause]
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come up here today and talk about the one summer retiree from the Warren Elementary School. Mary Lou Riverneider was the school nurse for students in Ashland for 32 years, and for 32 years, she offered a warm heart, a gentle soul, and extreme kindness for all of the families in Ashland. I think one thing that is, has to be said is, these last few years, when students would come to see Mary Lou, she serviced many of their parents, as their school nurse as well, and the parents would come in knowing that the woman who took care of them when they were children was also taking care of their child, and I know Mary Lou took great pride in that, and took great pride in knowing how much she loved every student that came into that office. And I think our staff certainly misses being greeted every morning with a huge smile and a kiss on the cheek. That's Mary Lou's trademark, was to kiss everybody hello, and kiss everybody goodbye, and we certainly are thankful for all of the service of Mrs. Riverneider. The students and the families have been fortunate to have had your care for all of those years. So, thank you, Mrs. Riverneider, and have a great retirement.
[applause]
Absolutely. Wow. 32 years, a long, long time. I miss it. I really, I really do, I miss it.
Wait, do I, wait, that's it. Do I have to hold it?
No.
I, 32 years has a long, long time. I didn't realize how long it was until the last day came, and I realized, you know, oh my gosh, 32 years, taking care of children, staff members, parents, like Mr. Kira said, and I love every minute of it, honestly and truly, I love every minute of it, and you miss it. And, I'm trying my best to go on with my new life. I'm trying not to sit on my couch and fall asleep, with my husband next to me. I say to myself, this cannot be retirement. You know, I'm too young to sit on my couch and fall asleep. Definitely, this is not one for me. This is not Mary Lou Riverneider. I gotta get up and go. And, it's very, very interesting what's happening to me, it's a big change in my life, but someone said to me once, you know, you gotta go on with your life, and it is what it is. It is what it is. And I heard that phrase not too long ago, when my granddaughter celebrated her 18th birthday, and they had a rite of passage for her, and someone wrote on one of her notes, Sarah, it is what it is, you know, and I'm gonna say the same, it is what it is. 32 years, it's time for me to do something else, and I'm looking to do other things. There's a lot of opportunities there for nurses, and I'm not even looking, and I'm already, people are calling me and saying, you know, you're being interesting, and I'm saying, you know, well, give me a little time. I need some time to breathe, I need some time to file my retirement papers, which take forever, my health insurance paper that I take in forever, but, we're getting there, and honestly and truly, I miss the Warren School. I miss not being able to walk into that school, into my office, and the nurses, the wonderful nurses that I work with, that are here too, and I miss them, and miss the children, and so is life, isn't it, huh? You gotta go on, we have to go on, and I guess it's time for Mary Lou Riverneider to go on, and this is what I'm saying right now, you gotta go on, Mary Lou, you have to go on, and there's got to be other, other rainbows out there, you know, that are waiting for me to, to be part of it. I have a wonderful family, my husband Eddie's here, my daughter Deanna is here, my daughter Shelley, my dear friend Karen, a lot of my old friends from way back, John's here, married to my daughter Shelley, so, I mean, there's a lot of people here that I have known over the years, thank you for being part of this wonderful group here, and I, strange part about it, but I, like Mr. Kira said, I had a lot of the children, I had a lot of them, and then now I have, I have the children as children from the Warren School, and I'm thinking, oh my God, it's time to move. And I'm having children, parents are coming, saying, oh, Mrs. Riverneider, you used to be my school nurse, you know, 25, 30 years ago, and I'm saying, you know, I, I guess it's time for me to move on, but, Mr. Kira, thank you. I enjoy Mr. Kira when I first came in very much, but, good friends, good buddies, and I thoroughly enjoyed my experience. Thank you very much.
We'll never forget you.
Thank you.
Thank you. [applause] Okay. We're gonna do something really boring right now, and you're welcome to stay if you want to, or you can leave, because we're gonna review the minutes from the past, like, six weeks. So, this is a good time to make your exit if you're hoping to leave. [laughter] Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't need to give the notes on the minutes, but.
I have to leave it.
I don't know why I have to go.
Really, you're leaving?
Maybe they're all fine.
So, that'll be quick.
Yeah.
I skimmed it.
Good job.
All right, who's ready to start with the June 12th minutes? Anybody have anything on the 12th?
Sorry, let's see. 12.
Lori, I have to scoot for just a second, I'm sorry.
I moved that we accept the minutes from the 12th.
Yeah, I don't have any notes, I don't have any changes myself on the 12th. Do you, Marsha?
No, I moved, I'll accept them. That's my movement.
Okay. Comes up, that's your motion?
I moved to accept them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're good.
Does Gina have any comments?
No, she just had to do something. She would've said if she did.
Oh, okay. That's okay. Marsha, did you have anything on the 12th?
I apologize, I did it on the 12th, yeah, sorry.
The June 12th minutes, Marsha made the motion. Kim had to step out, I'm just trying to catch her.
Yeah, we're still discussing that motion, so.
Yes.
We have a motion, but not a second.
I will second.
I'm trying.
All in favor of accepting the June 12th minutes?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to June 26th.
Anything?
I did not.
I just had a question.
Where?
On page seven, in regards to the summer workshop agenda. Mrs. Bates suggested that there would need to be a conscious decision on how much time is spent on that. I don't remember. What does that, what?
Where is that, Kathy?
Page seven.
Where?
Under a, a summer workshop agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Larson asked whether the policy manual should be reviewed if it is ready.
Oh, yeah.
Mrs. Bates suggested that there would need to be a conscious decision on how much time is spent on that. I, I don't, I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't have a recollection of it, Kathy, I mean, we can strike it if it doesn't seem to make sense.
I think, I mean, what I was maybe talking about, that doesn't make sense to me, but if we were talking about the policy manual, we would need time. I know we've talked about having, we need like a separate meeting to talk about.
Maybe that's what you meant, is having a whole separate session, as we discussed.
Yeah, unless maybe we just strike it, or, all right, why don't we just say, I, I think that's probably what I was saying, Mrs. Bates suggested that there would need to be maybe separate, a separate meeting set aside.
Sure, need to be a separate, a separate meeting to discuss the policy manual?
Yeah.
Is that more reflective of what you meant?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to accept these minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, this is just a typo thing, but on page five, on the fourth paragraph down, it says, Mr. Rich, and I think it meant Mr. Lynn. Okay. Uh, June, July 28th. I didn't have anything on those, anybody?
Nope, I didn't have anything.
Okay, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
July 29th?
I didn't see about any of them. Well, yeah, I have a couple of things, I'm just wondering. All right, on page three, three-year strategic plan, so it says, "Our strategic plan is in place until 2016, however, it is no longer relevant." Did we say that, or did we say, maybe it's not completely relevant, or, I mean, that just seems like, did we say that, it's no longer relevant?
Well, we said we, we needed a new one, and what's there is, is a little outdated, or it hasn't been updated or reviewed in a while, so.
All right.
That is pretty strong term, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think the context was to, we were, we were going to review it to see if it was still relevant. It's my memory of how we've talked about that plan, I mean, in the past, parts of it aren't relevant, but parts of it probably are, still.
Right. So, um, so.
So, you can either strike the, however, it is no longer relevant, or maybe change it to, however, parts of it may no longer be relevant.
All right, I've had to say that, because I don't.
Yeah, let's do that, I think that was the intention.
Okay.
Parts of it may no longer be relevant, and anything else?
Um, well, then I'm wondering, do we, do we need to be more specific down, the same page, down in the policy updates, um, policy OP 3.4 fundraising, a motion was made by Mrs. Bates and seconded by Mr. Larson to accept the changes to the policy as presented? Do we need to?
It would be attached, you would attach the policy.
Oh, all right. Okay, so there would be, I see, got it, and then that's probably the same here as policy, the academic eligibility for student participation. Okay, all right, got it, thanks, because I thought it was lacking, so it'll be attached, got it.
Awesome. Do we have a motion to accept these as amended?
So moved.
Second? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then on to August 25th, 2014.
And I did not have anything.
I didn't have anything there. Anybody? Okay, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll set with the minutes, and we got you in before eight o'clock, Lee.
Yes.
Student representative update. First of all, welcome. It's really great to have you this year. We always have the best luck with our students, and it's, we find it's a really valuable part of what we do, is to have your voice, so thank you for stepping up and.
Thank you.
Being willing to.
I'm very excited.
Yeah, we're really happy to have you. So, welcome, and let us know what's going on in your building.
Um, well, speaking as a senior, scarily, we have convocation tomorrow morning. I don't know if you guys have heard about the PBS event, I'm sure Mr. Adams has. We're doing something very different this year, and I'm personally am very excited because I'm a very musical person. We're splitting up into groups and doing a lip sync of Footloose, and we're recording it and doing choreography with the whole entire school. It's gonna be very exciting.
Can we come?
Yeah, can I come?
You can join in the dancing.
Same for that part.
But I think what makes it special is, everyone's gonna be wearing the Ashland colors, and seniors in white, and we're gonna be splitting up into not just made-up groups, it's gonna be our clubs, so, for instance, for me, theater, football team, so it kind of makes it more of a hearty thing, it puts our heart into it, because we're with our friends. Also, as a senior, yesterday, we were talking about caps and gowns, and.
Already.
Kind of got a little nerve-wracking. We, I don't, this was, I didn't know, I wrote it down, I didn't know if it was discussed among you all, that we have a new campus officer to increase our safety around the school, and teachers are now on empty periods, some teachers will be supervising the school to make sure students are safe and no one's roaming the hallways, and nothing suspicious is going on. The fall play, Pride's Crossings, auditions were Tuesday, and callbacks were on Wednesday, and the cast list came out today. I've been lucky enough to work beside Mr. Harrington, because I will be directing. It's very exciting, it's a great play, it's about a nine-year-old Maybell, and she is the first woman to swim the English Channel, and it's about her reminiscing her life, it's a very nice play. The senior barbecue is also tomorrow, can't say if I'm gonna enjoy the heat, but I'm excited. And, yeah, just adding on to convocation is, I thought I, being a part of chorus, I like to put the arts out there a little bit more. We have Emma Pigioni, Maddie Fry, Madison Temple, myself, and Cassie, I'm not sure of her last name, because she is a new student, and will be singing the National Anthem. But, that's all I can bring to the table, because it's been the first two weeks of school.
How's the temperature in the building?
Um, in the science department, I could tell you it's probably over 100 degrees, but, hasn't been too bad, knock on wood.
Good. What will the students do for, if they're not a member of a club? Is there sort of another way?
Um, well, I know we're splitting off into groups and working with individuals in assigned groups, and then also, towards the end, we'll be going into clubs, also, just for an add-on.
Oh, I see. Oh, so it's a little bit of everything?
Yeah, yeah, it's a little bit of everything.
Oh, that's nice. Well, good. Sounds exciting.
Any other questions? Well, it sounds like you're off to a good start, so far, and, and we're, again, thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
We know Lee has to go off to another engagement, so.
Yeah, we has, has to scoot, and you are dismissed whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, superintendent report, your first.
My first, huh?
Mr. Adams.
Do I have to make it great? No.
No pressure.
First two weeks, I'll keep it short and sweet. First two weeks, I believe, school's opened very smoothly, and we had a nice opening last week, I've been able to visit every school at least once a day, so that's been tremendous. I've been invited tomorrow by the senior class, actually, I will be in shorts and a t-shirt flipping burgers for the barbecue. Nice. And, Mr. Worster's invited me to be a part of the lip sync, which I've declined. I, maybe I have a cameo, but there'll be no, no singing involved by Mr. Adams. We've certainly been through the state mandated fire drills, they went well today, I actually visited, happened to be at the high school for their drill, and I was back here at the middle school with Mr. D. Geralamo and witnessing that, and things went pretty smoothly. There are some suggestions that are being made by the police and the fire department, which we'll be incorporating into our plans of exit and egress, so, that's pretty much it. It's just, it's been a whirlwind, couple of weeks, for sure, getting my feet on the ground, but, meeting a lot of folks, and it's been exciting.
Great. Off to a good start.
Off to a good start.
Awesome, thank you.
I, I just have two things that I'd like to mention. I'd like to update on the school roof projects. Thanks to a very dry summer, both projects were successfully substantially completed prior to opening of school. We had the final closeout meeting earlier this week with both of the contractors. At the Warren School, there's a very small punch list of things that need to be done, I think they needed to do some cleaning up, and, and they looked at one section of the roof, but, for all purposes, that roof project has been completed. And then here at the middle school, this project has been, the roofing has been completed, we're waiting for a door to be delivered, they're gonna replace a door on the roof, they're putting up some fencing and some ladders on the roof. So, we had discussion with that contractor, they know that they need to do that work, they think it will take one full day. We told them they could either do after 2:30 on a couple of afternoons, or a Saturday, or, we have no school on September 25th, so they could do the work that day if the parts come in on time. So, that project will be completed at that point, so, and our architect and the commissioning agent came out and said both projects were very well done, so, was a huge success for us to get that work done this year, so. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, the town has been working with the unions and the retirees to look at moving from our current health insurance plan to the state GIC plan, and school committee voted a few months, not school committee, Board of Selectmen voted a few months ago to allow the process to move forward, and what has to happen then is negotiations take place between the town and the unions. By law, 25% of the savings in the first year have to go into a mitigation fund and be, be used on the people in the plan. They held several meetings, they have reached agreement. On September 9th, the unions will be taking a vote to ratify the agreement, and on September 10th, the Board of Selectmen will be voting, and if both of those votes are part.
we're waiting for a door to be delivered, they're gonna replace a door on the roof, they're putting up some fencing and some ladders on the roof. So we had discussion with that contractor, they know that they need to do that work, they think it will take one full day. We told them they could either do after 2:30 on a couple of afternoons, or a Saturday, or we have no school on September 25th, so they could do the work that day if the parts come in on time. So that project will be completed at that point, so. And our architect and the commissioning agent came out and said both projects were very well-done, so was a huge success for us to get that work done this year, so. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is, the town has been working with the unions and the retirees to look at moving from our current health insurance plan to the state GIC plan. And school committee voted a few months, not school committee, Board of Selectmen voted a few months ago to allow the process to move forward. And what has to happen, then, is negotiations take place between the town and the unions. By law, 25% of the savings in the first year have to go into a mitigation fund and be used on the people in the plan. They held several meetings, they have reached agreement. On September 9th, the unions will be taking a vote to ratify the agreement, and on September 10th, the Board of Selectmen will be voting. And if both of those votes are positive, then town employees will be moving to the GIC plan next July, July of 2015. And there will be savings to the town. I don't have that number, because I don't know what they ended up negotiating, going back to the employees, but I wanted to update you on that, that Tony and Michael worked very hard to work with the unions to get this accepted, so we'll have more information on that later.
Is this just town employees, or school employees?
Town and school employees.
Town and school, okay.
Yep, we're all on the same health plan.
Okay, and all that, with all the unions, the teachers' union?
Teachers' union, nurses' union, police, fire, DPW, everybody was there. And retirees, they had a representative for retirees.
And Board of Selectmen vote you said is on the 10th?
September 10th.
September 10th.
The unions vote, September 9th. Okay.
And then the last question, as school committee, we're, we have no input on this at all?
No. By law, it's Board of Selectmen.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Rich?
Just two quick things, I guess a welcome to our, about fifteen new teachers now. We had our new teacher orientation, mentor training, connected those folks together, and I've visited all of our new teachers' classrooms, they seem to be settling in, you know, it's a little overwhelming starting a new job and sort of figuring out everything, but they're all doing pretty well, and just, you know, we're excited to have them. I know the principals did a great job through the selection process, so, welcome to them. And second, our envisioned math material is in, for the most part, there's a few little straggling pieces out there that we're tracking down. And we began the training on August 25th, and again, a few glitches here and there, but we're working through it with the company, who's been pretty responsive, and I know the teachers are excited to get rolling with it, they're using it, but it's sort of figuring out what they have and moving forward, so, very exciting for our K through five math program, which you so generously approved last June, and we're off and running, so.
Thank you for that.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's good news.
And I do have some gift donations.
Yes, please.
Just quite a few of them, actually. From the David Mendez School, Targets Take Charge of Education, we have a check for From the Mass Amateur Sports Foundation, Teresa McCarrick at Warren has received $500 for a sped bike, two tricycles, and bike tubes. Middlesex, this is from the Treasurer of Star, I'm not sure what Star stands for. Mary McMillan, the Treasurer of Star, has given Jeannie Young at Community Ed a check for $2,174.27 to put towards the Community Ed programs that are offered after-school for our students.
That's great.
Fall at Educational Services, Mendez sold back some books and received a check for We received our quarterly Planet Aid donation bins, the money from that, and it's $588. Mendez School sold back some more books to Fall at Educational and received a check for $170.49. The Target Education Program, the middle school received $215.29. And American International College has given the middle school $300 for materials for classrooms. And that's all.
Wow. Do we have a motion to accept the recent donations?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, special topic. Our first one, naming of school facilities. Dr. Ruth Field is here again, thank you, and I know you came to our, was it our last meeting of the school year, in June? So, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. So, thank you for coming again. I don't think we're ready to have a vote tonight, we're definitely interested in naming something after Mr. Hebden, and I think that's what we decided after your last meeting. I think in the summer, with our new superintendent and things going on, we still need some feedback on what we're gonna consider for the naming. So, we're not ready, I don't think, for a vote tonight, but we're definitely gonna be...
The last meeting we were at.
Did you want to come to the microphone, Dr. Ruth Field? I think we're still having the issue, so, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Not being accustomed to speaking in microphones.
Yeah.
The last meeting, June 26th, when we were here, and these are some folks, and one interesting new member, is Ian Gentile, who's a former member of the school committee, who's here in support of Bob Hebden in the naming of the building. Mr. and Mrs. Connie Mantle and her husband, Bob, and Bob Thacker, and Alie Thacker, also here, they were here at the last meeting as well. And my understanding was, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was that we originally talked about a softball field, and then the topic came up from a member, that where he had been here and done so many things for the school, the first field that we come to was the baseball field, and that that was the one we were focusing on. And that's how, when I left the meeting, that was my understanding. Am I, did I misunderstand something?
Well, all I can tell you is what was in the minutes. When I went back to look at the minutes, just to see what it is that we needed to do tonight, it said, I think the last sentence of the minutes, and I'll try to grab it so I can read it and not misquote it. Does anybody have the June 26th? Said something about we were going to go back. Superintendent Clenchey and Mrs. Tosti suggested that school committee members think about the specific field and discuss this more at the next meeting. So, I think the step that was missed is getting a recommendation for which field, so that we could talk about it tonight in Superintendent Clenchey's absence. So that's the piece that we do need to follow up on, and I apologize, we're not ready tonight, but...
Just so, I think these folks could verify that we left it with the high school, is that correct? Your understanding?
Yes.
When we left, that was the field, that we, and the rationale was?
Yeah.
Because of all the work he has done for the town, that that would be the field people would see when they walk in.
It does say, Dr. Ruth, that you requested that somewhere. It says, say, for sure.
You requested it.
Yeah, it does say that you brought that up at that last meeting.
And we'll take that under consideration, no question about it. The other thing, the other direction I would point you in is also our policy manual, right? There's certain steps that need to be followed.
Yes, Mrs. Mantle.
Yes.
It's not many.
Yeah, good, good, good. And there is, there is one, there are some steps in there, again, like notifying the community of our intent, and having feedback from the community in some way, that has not occurred as well. So there was some discussion.
I thought that already took place, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes, fair enough, fair enough. Not, to my awareness, it has not, so.
Yeah, okay. Alright, so, you're tailing it this time to, what's the next step, then?
Next meeting?
I would say, yeah.
Next meeting? Next meeting.
And what is the date on that?
That is two weeks from today, the 18th.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth.
If you don't mind, I'd like to come back?
Please, yeah, and I'm sorry you have to come back again, we just have to get...
Alright, thank you very much.
Back on track here, thank you for your patience.
I would wish Jim Adams best of luck.
Thank you, Dr. Arson.
In your job, and he'll do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
Oh, please, please.
No, you're not in charge.
He's in charge, congratulations.
Yes, ma'am, you may.
My name's Sam Gentile, I won't keep you, and I apologize, I'm kind of on the run. I just, since you're gonna continue this, and I haven't been totally involved, I've known Bob Hebden probably thirty years, over the years, whatever, you don't need to know that, a long time, but on the occasion of his last birthday, I decided to interview him, and I did, and it was very interesting. This is the interview, I only have one copy, I'm gonna give it to you if you would like to read it. I started out by saying, in the beginning, there was Bob Hebden, and then there was Ashlyn. So, I just wanted to offer that.
That's it all?
You know his contributions to the schools and to the town, but as a person, you know, he's a good role model, so I would just like to give you this, I apologize, it's not better.
No, no, they are, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Do you want to make a copy of that?
I will, and I'll make sure everybody gets one. We have another naming of school facilities request. Is there anyone here that's gonna present that, or is that?
I didn't.
Just up to us, too?
I talked to Carl, I mean, I left a message for Carl, but I'm not sure he was aware that this, was he made aware this was on the agenda? Because he had...
I don't know, Karen usually...
Yeah, I believe Karen did.
Karen usually loops with, around with people on...
Okay, because he had asked me about this, just in a casual conversation, what happened, and I said, "I would expect we'll take it up again in the fall," that was before the agenda came up. And so, he, at that point, wasn't aware, but you think that he did? Because I've been speaking with him every day, and he never mentioned it, so, about other matters.
Well, I don't know for sure.
And nor do I, so I would suggest we move this also.
Move them both to the next meeting?
To the 18th, so they have a voice.
Yeah, but maybe, I mean, yeah, maybe, just for the purposes...
We have the written request, unless there's something for us to talk about now in terms of the process.
Well, yeah, that's, maybe that's a good way of putting it. So, in terms of the process, maybe we're just gonna follow the regular process, is that what you would expect?
Yeah, the policy, you know, sort of outlines what we, has a couple of differences.
So there's nine steps, there are nine steps in the procedure?
Yeah, I guess, you know what, the part that I'm stumbling over is the idea that, I don't think the policy anticipated that you could get two requests that were very similar, but slightly distinct. And so, we'll just have to have a plan for that, I think, because there's slightly, those two letters are distinct, in terms of one of them is looking for one individual, and the other is looking for two, is that right?
That's right, right.
So, we just need to be prepared for that, that's all.
Right, are they two separate requests, or are they the same request?
Well...
I mean, the written is two separate, one of them includes, one person is on both requests.
That's what I think. I think one is sort of the evolved request, well, Mark, maybe you even know better, because you've been involved with the second one, am I right?
So, what I would suggest is actually we follow the procedure, right, and let the committee that we assemble work that out, figure out, okay, here's a request that has, you know, some, I won't say conflicting information, but there's certainly some overlapping information.
Yes.
And, you know, the, give that, task that to the committee, to resolve, you know, whatever, you know, whatever discrepancy that might be there. But I think, I think that's a, you know, a reasonable approach. The, you know, there's also a recommendation in here for what's to be named as well, so, again, I would leave that to the committee to make a recommendation back to us for. So, but yeah, the committee is step, is procedure three, right? So most of the procedures have been followed up to this point.
So the next step would be to assemble a committee to look into it.
So that's, so that would be, that's sort of circling back around to the fact that no one's here to present on this, I'm not sure where that fits, anyway. I mean, we did with Barry for the other one, I think because we skipped beyond all the things.
Well, they were asked to make their written presentation first, so maybe they're thinking that, since they put it in writing, that that's the presentation.
So, but we are on assembly of all pertinent information, the request shall be forwarded, so we're here, and it's placed on an agenda.
Right.
Then, at its discretion, it may vote to accept a naming nomination, or, and proceed directly, or it may vote to convene a subcommittee. I would suggest we're at the point of convening a subcommittee.
That was my recommendation.
To do that tonight.
Yes, we can do that, we don't need a presenter here.
We don't need anybody here.
Because they've made their formal request.
So that may be why Karen didn't invite them, because it actually isn't...
There's nothing for them to add at this point.
There's no formal point at this.
Right. They may be asked, you know, by the committee to come in and make a verbal presentation, but at this point, they've made their request.
That's right.
And I think it's up to us to just give the superintendent the authority to assemble the committee.
That's what I would, I agree, I think that's where we're at.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
That sounds perfect. That sounds perfect.
We need a vote, Barbara, to assemble, to assemble a committee? Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, just to go over the, what the committee is composed of, that's procedure number six?
Yes, thank you, Mark, for the benefit of the community.
Yeah, for the benefit of the community, right? So, a subcommittee formed for this purpose will consist of a minimum of three members of the community, two school staff members designated by the superintendent, which may include the superintendent, and one member of town government as designated by the town manager. So, of three community members can be...
And then, read the, why don't you read the...
Yeah, and I'll continue, sure. "Community members wishing to sit on the committee must submit a request in writing to the superintendent of schools, who will confirm that they are appropriate parties to assess the nomination. In the event that more than three individuals are interested in participating, the superintendent may, in his or her discretion, choose three names by lottery, or choose to name more than three community members to serve." Which, in this, it may be the case in this situation.
So I figured, if people are listening...
And they are interested in...
They contact the superintendent's office.
And what we'll do is, we'll put a posting on our webpage, the APS webpage, as well as ask the town manager to put it on the town webpage as well, requesting anyone who's interested in participating to put in writing that they want to participate for these.
Let's see if we can get it in the newspapers.
Great.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, moving on, we're gonna review our liaison and subcommittee assignments. We had our summer retreat, and usually at the... Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I had a little note to myself to stick right under, we're supposed to be after number two. We moved on, I apologize, Mike. Please. You can let us know what's going on.
Yes.
In the first grade over at Warren School.
Absolutely, thank you so much for the opportunity to give you an update. The thing that I want to say is that I feel like this whole situation was the ultimate example of a collaborative effort for the entire school department, from the, you folks graciously allowing us to have this extra classroom, to Assistant Superintendent Duran getting behind it, and, you know, Mr. Lynn making sure that we had plenty of materials ordered already, in case something like this ever did happen. To Mr. Adams, obviously, spearheading it, you know, to make sure that this was able to take place, and the collaborative effort of Kathy Silva to help find a space within our building, because we all know Warren has, you know, some space issues. So, we were able to open up a new classroom, to keep our numbers down for first grade. As you know, they, we had 21 new registrations in first grade alone over the summer. Our classroom students were dealing with classes of 24 before this switch was made. Nineteen students are now in the new first grade class. All parents have been informed, and we had a fantastic opening day ceremony on Tuesday, which involved a parade through the Warren School hallways, where the entire student population came out and cheered them on. I think some of our kindergartners who were dealing with their first day were a little shell-shocked, to all of a sudden see kids running through the hall, and everybody clapped. And teachers just said, "Don't worry, this doesn't happen all the time," but it was a fun moment, and they had their, Mrs. Savell, who is the teacher in the room, created hats for all of the kids, she made them special pennants that they could take with them throughout the parade. They were so excited, they came in, we had a ribbon-cutting ceremony, Mr. Adams cut a ribbon with Mrs. Savell, and every single student held on to a pair of scissors, and they cut it, and they each took a little piece of that ribbon home. It really was a terrific little event. The classroom looks fantastic, it's just, everything has really come together, and I didn't mention the first grade team, either, the first grade team of teachers to just get behind this whole initiative, and to offer the assistance to a first-year teacher who was charged with putting together a classroom in literally less than a week, and then to, you know, all of the support that they've given her has been fantastic. We have such a great team of teachers at Warren, everybody has gotten behind her. Our special education staff, who was a little displaced because of the classroom move, they have everything in order. We have such a, a great team of teachers at Warren, everybody has gotten behind her. Our special education staff, who was a little displaced because of the classroom move, they have everything in order. Everybody was moved to a spot where we didn't lose any, we didn't lose any ability to provide great service for all the kids. So, it just really has been a fantastic move for us. And I just wanted to let you know how great it's been going. So, we're off to a good start.
And Mike, I would even add a shout out to the, to the maintenance staff.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We were very shorthanded that day and it was actually Eric Heidemann and Ron Morrison who ended up taking that classroom apart and.
Thank you for saying that.
It was a very warm day, too.
Eric and Ron made quick work of that. And it was remarkable, they really did, they just, they got in and it was done. It was, and they said, no problem, whatever you need. And those guys were great, so, yeah.
And I think, I think it's important, you know, we kind of just all assume that, you know, that it's important to have smaller classrooms and especially for people watching who grew up, when I grew up, when you all were just sitting, you know, in desks. And what difference does one more kid make? But first grade classrooms, can you just talk a little bit about, you know, just how much difference it makes to just, just change it by one or two in terms of what a first grade teacher does?
Absolutely, especially with some of the things that we try to do at Warren. I'll, I'll bring it to the use of the daily five, for instance. And then daily five is something we do for our literacy instruction. When you can go from having four groups of six to five groups of four, or from six groups of four to five groups of four, you've just changed the dynamic and everything because you can concentrate on four students at one time so much easier than you can concentrate on six students at one time. And then, just the safety issue, kids moving around. We like to have kids moving and having opportunity to get that kinesthetic learner the way that they really need to. And when you have a crowded room, you can't do those things. It limits the type of teaching that we can have. So, to be able to have that really small group instruction, to be able to manage the class size, to be able to have true differentiation for each kid. I think that when you can lower that class size to nineteen to twenty-two, that's ideally where we wanna be. Obviously, twenty-four is workable, but it's not where we wanna be. And we wanna be able to offer the type of quality education that we've been doing, so. Especially at that, you know, at that particular level.
It's so hands-on, you know what I mean? When they're still tying shoes for the kids.
That's right.
It matters.
It does.
And thanks to you two, you're standing there thanking everybody else, but you know, you recognize the problem. You worked really hard to find solutions and to really, it's the way that you handled it that I think you got everybody's cooperation.
Oh, thank you.
So, thank you for that and it's music to our ears on school committee, just to hear just how everybody is working so well together. This is the perfect story. I hope that we hear many more like this, this year, this is my intention.
Me too.
But, but thank you for all the work that you did. You had to scramble the week or two before school, we realize that, we recognize it and we really appreciate it. On behalf of the kids, it really is and was what's best for them. And the parade, thank you for handling it so sensitively with the kids and making it fun. I'm kinda sorry I missed it, it sounds like a fun, yeah.
It was a good time, so, please come in and see the class. Yeah, come and visit, Mrs. Savell would love to have you. And we'll be getting some notes out to you, I'll give a little plug because we'll be having a, you know, a little community reading soon.
Love that.
We'll get you in soon.
Like that.
All right?
Awesome.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I bumped you down a couple notches here.
I had a partner in crime to stay with me, so it was all right.
I guess I owe you an apology, too. Okay, now the subcommittee assignments.
No.
No. Prioritizing the athletic field repairs, I've skipped that altogether.
So, just a quick background with the athletic fields. When, when they were designed a number of years ago, and again, we built the fields, we opened them in two thousand, were you fourteen, no, two thousand and twelve? Thanksgiving Day of two thousand and twelve was the opening day of our fields. And what we recognized at that time were there are some, there were certainly some design flaws with, with the fields. And working through town council, we've been able to go through a process of mediation with our engineer. And as of Tuesday, we received a check of, for a hundred thousand dollars that has been put into an account for the schools to use to help rectify the safety issues and concerns of, because of the design flaws. So, what I've given you this evening is a list of eleven items that really relate to the fields and the safety of, for our students in our community and the renters. And in an order that Ms. Durand and Mr. Quigley and I sat and discussed to hopefully mitigate any potential liability issues and or dangerous situations for our students and spectators and guests on our fields. What you'll notice is the first rank item is the wetlands requirement. Part of the process of, with the CPA funds, we recognize there are wetlands at the high school, if you remember going back. So, we're required to plant eighty-five plants in an area. That has not been done yet, so that's the most important thing that we have to do, first and foremost, is as part of the.
We made that mention.
Yes, well, it was part, it was actually part of the conditions of, of building. And that should have been done. And when Mr. Heidemann comes back, congratulations to him tomorrow, he's getting married. So, he's, so when he returns, this will, these will be the first priorities that he, he takes in terms of the cost. So, the estimates that you see before you actually came out of the AFMG, Nick Moser, a fellow, initially provided us with estimates going back as far as last April. And what's important to note is, they're, I don't know how accurate they are. So, we need to, you know, get bids on certain things. The fencing concern that the community has expressed to us, I have put, and Ms. Durand and Mr. Quigley, we all agree, that has to be the number two priority, if you will, for safety. Safety first. So, if you wanna look at the, the items and ask questions, I certainly can answer them. I was pretty, had pretty intimate knowledge of, of the field being built. I was obviously the principal at the time, so.
Were there every day.
I was there.
The general area of the wetlands, is it, is there one specific area or are there varied areas?
There are various areas that have to be covered, yeah.
Okay.
I can't, I can't give you the exact spots.
No, I just didn't know if there was one specific area, okay.
And the hundred thousand dollars is set aside for this field complex, the high school field. So, if there's other things?
It's, the money is designated to rectify design flaws in that complex.
Project, yeah.
So, if there is another design flaw in that complex, that hundred thousand, if there's money left, could be used for that?
If there's still money left after these estimates change, yeah.
Yeah, right, the point you made is the estimates are, are they're not, they need to be scrutinized.
Sure, if you take number six, for instance, which is the baseball scoreboard relocation. I can tell you when the fields were being built. And we noticed at that time that the scoreboard was in the wrong spot. Safety to the, to the batters. The estimate they gave us at that time was forty thousand dollars to move that scoreboard at the time. And again, I wanna make sure that, you know, we have it at twenty thousand here. I don't know what the true cost is, and we won't know until we have it, you know, the bids.
I'm sorry, so why is, can you tell me specifically why that, that's an issue at this time? I, I, because I haven't watched a baseball game yet there.
Okay, so.
They haven't had any.
Well, they had to go over the summer, we've rented the field out, actually. Our high school team, our school teams have not used the field yet.
So, this will be our first spring.
So, when you're standing at home plate and you're looking out into the field and in direct line of sight is a blue, big blue scoreboard. So, picking up the ball coming out of the pitcher's hands is gonna be very difficult to do. It's sort of, if you think of, think of Fenway Park and in the afternoon games.
Oh, they put the black.
Exactly, they put the blackout on, on the stands. So, it's easier for the batter to be able to pick up the ball, so, because it's a safety issue. And that's the concern. So, it has to be moved to, most likely to the right, if you're facing the scoreboard from the parking lot. But that involves electrical work and involves the footings, all of, all of those things that go with that.
So, can I assume that this was a settlement and a hundred thousand dollars probably wasn't picked out of the air?
Correct.
Was that, so, sort of, as part of that settlement, were these items listed out and somebody came up with estimates or? In other words, are we, are we within, do we have the money to do what really needs to be done as part of this?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe this list, to me, if we look at the rank order, there are a couple of things that really stand out. If you're on the, on the football soccer field, the artificial surface and the track, the discus circle is directly behind where the long and triple jump run. And it makes no sense. And again, why we didn't pick that flaw, that design flaw before, I'm not sure, we didn't. But, once we got up there and we had state track officials come to us and say, you cannot host, again, our plan is right, to host Tri Valley meat or bigger meat and to rent that facility out. They will not allow us to do that because of the safety issues.
Is that the issue with the shot put as well, with the safety issue?
Yeah, the shot put is right in the middle of the track and they call them D areas. So, if you're looking at the field and you see the shot put area, there's sand and gravel, or sand that they put the shot, is the correct term, into. And that sand gets out onto the, onto the track, et cetera. Typically, that, what they call the D area of the end zones, that could be another area for a high jump pit. Again, it's about a safety concern. You could throw a shot out and go into the track while someone's running.
And so we have room on these other areas to relocate those?
If you, there's that grass practice field between the complex and the softball field down below. That is where the discus would go, that's where we throw the javelin as well.
So, this is just, this is, we're having a discussion to give us just the information, but this is a fields, this is like Eric's, he's gonna manage this without, right? I mean, we're not voting on this.
He'll be working with, with Dave Menucci and at E W.
Isn't he?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it's just FYI because some of us have had some community, have had some community requests about when are some of these communities, so it's good to know, thank you for the information.
Yeah, so it's unfortunate, oh, go ahead, I'll let you go first.
Well, I just wanna ask, there's something that isn't on there and I was just wondering about it because I thought there was a concern, just around the baseball field, the pitcher's mound, too? Was there any talk about that?
There was not. I think the, the concern with the pitcher's mound was, was it built up enough? There's a, there's a certain pitch that it must be at. And I'm, I'm pretty certain that there'll be some funds left over through this process to fix that design flaw, too, I really do. But that wasn't a safety concern right away. But it is a design flaw, therefore the funds could be used for that. There he is.
So, yeah, all right, so.
They don't think you can hit without the.
Well, they have, I mean, again, it's, it's, again, is it a quarter of an inch too low?
I don't know what else.
Right, nor do I.
Yeah, so it's unfortunate that these things occurred, but the town and the school, Ashland Public Schools took action, got a, got a settlement to rectify this and.
Thank you, Mr. Skavie, as he walks in.
Yes, thank you, perfect timing.
And I'm sure at some point there'll be a schedule of when all these things will be completed and, yeah.
As I said, when Mr. Heidemann comes back, we'll look at getting the bids for the things that need to be moved.
Right.
The fencing, we've already been in contact with fence companies, looking at putting fences from the devil's den all the way down, as well as the rip rap. So, those are discussions that are, we're taking action on.
Thank you for that update.
Any other questions? Okay, and we don't need a vote.
Thank you.
So, we.
Thank you for that update, that's great.
I just couldn't wait to talk about this liaison and subcommittee assignments. I kept putting it up there and now we're here. So, at our summer retreat, as we normally do, we assigned the roles for the year, for the school committee members and just for the benefit of the public, the partnership subcommittee, Gina Donovan. For liaisons, Ash PAC will be Marcia Rennie. Town liaison will be myself and Kathy Bates. Decisions at Every Turn Coalition, Gina Donovan. And for liaisons to site councils, we have Mark Larson at the high school. I will be at the middle school. Gina Donovan will be at Mindes. Kathy Bates will be at Warren, the Warren Piddaway Site Council. Gina and Marcia will be the school committee website liaisons. I will be the news liaison. Mark Larson will be facilities and Gina will continue on the safety and security committee. So, that's it. Any questions or comments or miss anything? No, we're good? Okay. We need a discussion and a vote to appoint Mr. Adams to the accept board. Do you wanna say anything about that or do you just want the motion?
Just the motion is fine, it's the accept collaborative and the superintendents are part of the board of directors for the collaborative and they just need a vote. I've, I've gone through all of the training that were required by Mass General Law to be a part of, as a board of director as well, so that's kind of completed. First meeting is next week, they need the vote, that's all.
I move.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion and vote on the Ashland Educators Association contract. Perfect timing. Does anybody wanna give any background on that? Ms. Durand, please.
I will, for the purposes of the public. So, we have, we have a memorandum of agreement with the Ashland Educations Association, Unit A, the teachers. There's some language in there to clean up some areas of the contract. There's some language in there about how many minutes a period consists of and that type of thing. But for the public, I'll just kind of review the monetary implications to the contract. So, effective August fifteenth, twenty fourteen, so for this school year, all, all steps and lanes in the teacher's salary scale will increase one point two five percent. And then in the master's lanes columns, at the top step only, there will be an increase of an additional three hundred dollars. So, prior to top step, on steps one through eleven, teachers move a step every year. When you're on step twelve, it stops. So, those teachers at step twelve will be receiving an additional three hundred dollars because they did not move a step. For next school year, beginning August fifteenth, twenty fifteen, all steps and lanes will receive a two percent increase. And in the master's lanes, the top step will receive a one hundred dollar amount of money added to that cell. And in the final year of the contract, which begins August fifteenth, twenty sixteen, it's also a two percent increase to all steps and lanes and a three hundred, three hundred dollar increase to the steps, top step in the master's lanes. There is an increase to some of the coaching. We did an analysis of some of our head coaching positions with other communities in the Tri Valley League and we agreed to make some changes to the head coaching positions. And then stipends for all other coaching positions, aside from the ones we agreed to change, are increasing by one percent in year one of the contract. And then there's also an increase to some of the co-curricular and academic stipends. These are stipends that go to the teachers for leading the National Honor Society or Japanese Club or any of those events that go on at the school. And those are going up by a formula that's been used in the past. So, we take step one of the bachelor's column, multiply it by point oh three and then each of those stipends has a ratio. And the ratio is calculated on how many times they meet, how many students are in the club, how much work is involved in running it. So, we've agreed to adjust that in year one of the contract. So, I think that's pretty much the big points of the, of the teacher's contract.
Okay, any questions, any comments?
Just one comment about the, the coaches. It looks like that we're starting to actually get our coaches' salaries or stipends in line with some other communities around, in the area.
Yes.
Yes, we're, we're working in that right direction.
We are, we, we had an analysis, other eleven?
It was Tri Valley.
Ten schools, there are ten total Tri Valleys.
And we had all of their coaching salaries and we worked out averages and all of that to see where we were.
Right, 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 so we're, our coaches are getting closer to that average. They were below that average, is my understanding.
Yeah, I think that is the average.
These in particular were, there were some other head coaching where we were on par, so we didn't make a change to them.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So, we need someone to move to accept the contract between the Ashland School Committee and the Ashland Educators Association for the period August fifteenth, twenty fourteen to August fourteenth, twenty seventeen, as outlined.
We just wanna mention, right.
Well, so.
Yeah, you do. Yes.
So, the town manager is here tonight because by town bylaw, he has a vote in the teacher's contract. So, as you take your vote tonight, we wanna make sure that he has the opportunity to be included in that vote.
Okay, do you want him to sit over here by the microphone?
Sure.
Do you think? The microphones aren't working over there, Tony. Why don't you come sit next to me?
We have to make you come all the way to the other side of the room. Oh, that's okay, I apologize. Put down Lee's.
You are not.
I'll start again, just now that we're all here. We need someone to move to accept the contract between the Ashland School Committee and the Ashland Educators Association for the period August fifteenth, twenty fourteen to August fourteenth, twenty seventeen, as outlined in the memorandum of understanding dated July eighteenth, twenty fourteen.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a second or just that one?
No, just, just the teacher.
Can I make one brief comment, just before I leave? I just wanted to just let you all know that we have got our VoIP phone system and the. know that we have got our VoIP phone system and the support that we got, the cooperative support between the town side and the school side, especially in the IT department, was phenomenal. So I want to thank Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Lakehew for their cooperation. It's been phenomenal, and we're going to see the benefits, not only in the service, but in savings. So it's been great. And I think as we continue to build that collaboration across that and other areas, I think are really going to pay major dividends. So I just want to let you know, they did a great job, and we really appreciate all their hard work and effort.
Oh, thank you so much. It's nice to know that that's running smoothly.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay. Nurses, next.
So, moving on to the nurses, again, there's some language changes in here. We cleaned up some of the evaluation language and grievance procedure, that type of thing. The monetary impact mirrors that of the teachers. So, effective in this year, July 1st, 2014, a 1.25 percent increase to all steps and lanes, and then a $300 increase to the top step in the bachelor's, bachelor's 15, and master's lanes. They only have one master's lane, whereas the teachers have four. July, then July 1st, 2015, it's a 2 percent increase to all steps and lanes, and $100 added to the top step of those lanes. And in the final year of the contract, July 1st, 2016, it's a 2 percent increase and a $300 increase to the top step of those lanes.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Okay, so then the motion would be for to accept the contract between the Ashland School Committee and the Ashland Nurses Unit for the period July 1, 2014, to June 30th, 2017, as outlined in the memorandum of understanding dated July 21, 2014. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And last but not least, the secretaries.
Moving right on to the secretaries. This is actually on par with the other ones, but it's worded a little bit differently because they, their salary is broken down to an hourly wage. So effective July 1st, 2014, each step in the salary schedule will be increased by the 1.25 percent, and then an additional five cents is added to the top step. And that's comparable to the, to the $300 in the other contracts. Effective July 1st, 2015, the increase to each step will be the 2 percent, and then there's a 15 cent increase to the top step. I want to go back. The increase this year, the five cents, represents a $100 increase to the top step. In year two, the 15 cents means a $300 increase to the top step. And effective July 1st, 2016, each step is increased 2 percent, and then an additional five cents is added. So that equals $100 to each of the top steps.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, so the motion would be to accept the contract between the Ashland School Committee and the Ashland Secretaries Unit for the period July 1, 2014, to June 30th, 2017, as outlined in the memorandum of understanding dated June 18th, 2014.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have our school committee meeting schedule, and as we've mentioned a couple of different times at our summer retreat and prior to that, we would like to add in a couple of budget-related meetings to that schedule. First of all, before we do that, does anybody, I know there's, November 6th is a problem because most of us will be out of town, so we will need everyone to take a quick look at their calendars and see when else we might reschedule that meeting. And is there anything else on here that anybody noticed that might conflict with a, with a holiday or anything major that we need to do a redo? Okay. For the November 6th, so that's also Thanksgiving month, and so that Thursday is out of the picture. So we would either be looking at two weeks in a row, or we could do, what night do we leave for the retreat?
I think last year we did one, but...
We just did one meeting in November?
I think we did, but we could do two in a row, but...
You move to the 13th, is that what you're thinking?
I may have a problem with the 13th, but that's just me.
What are the recommendations? Do people want to reschedule that, or cancel it?
You can schedule for the 13th, and if it, if we get closer and you don't need it, we could take it off the agenda.
Why don't we do that?
But you hope everybody's holding it.
Okay, why don't we do that? And we are adding a couple of other meetings to take care of some budget issues, if this works for folks. We talked about some recommendations. Jim mentioned a Saturday would be good for the administrators because they would have the whole day to, to talk with us and work with us and give us their, the rundown of their needs in their various schools.
Did you tell them that?
I have. No, we discussed this. I think it's a valuable exercise that we spend time, a full day, with you communicating the needs and wants of, of each building and all the departments.
Right.
And I've been through that process in other districts where it was a full-day meeting. And again, I'm about not pulling administrators out of buildings. I want them in their buildings as much as possible. But they do know it's coming, yes.
So I missed, you said, are you thinking in November then?
January.
Oh, January, okay.
Yeah.
I missed that.
A lot of it has to do with when Barbara's ready with her numbers, and then once that's the first step, and then the admins, once they have that information, they need to go do their work in their buildings. And it's about the beginning of January when they're ready to bring information to us. So Jim was thinking around January 10th?
January 10th, yeah.
Does that work for everybody, or sound like it might anyway, so that we can hopefully at least have a quorum there? And another one in February to sort of loop back around with whatever came up out of the January meeting. We might need to revisit on, in February, just to make sure we get our priorities straight and we're all on the same page before we present something to the tri board. So we were thinking that would not be a Saturday. February 7th?
That's also the 10th, right, and that's a Tuesday.
Oh, February 10th is a Tuesday.
And it's, we already have an administrators' meeting scheduled that day at nine o'clock, so.
Okay. And this would be, are you, a follow-up with them too?
Yes.
Yes, they would be present, but we would be doing it on their, during their admin meetings, so they wouldn't be missing anything additional. But it would also mean that we'd need to be here on a Tuesday morning, if, you know, the majority of us.
I have been in the past.
So, all right, so Saturday, January 10th, and Tuesday, February 10th. Right?
Yep.
And those dates work for us, right? Those are the dates that we want to drive to. Great. And that'll be something that you folks on liaison can communicate to, to the rest of the community.
Absolutely.
That those are our dates, this is...
Right, we've done this, we built it into the schedule. We're spending a lot of time, a full, a full day and a half almost, and if we need more, we'll do more. But this is a good place to start, and I think it also gives us some structure, we know when we need to be ready with the information and the numbers. And if something comes up, I mean, January and February, right now feel like they're a very long way off. Things come up, and we need to talk about it a different date, then we will. But for now, that's planned. Anything else on the calendar that needs to be reworked or discussed before we, do we vote on this calendar? Or it just is what it is?
It says action required.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the action items and future agenda items.
And then just Karen, take care of those dates, that date change and stuff.
Right, she will. Yeah, I'll give them to her tomorrow.
I hope it's icy that day. I just need to get to my list of... Want to know now, like October 9th, Ashland Middle School open house, and I'm going to go to that, so I'll be coming to this meeting later. Do you want to know that now?
No, not unless it's like, if it's a holiday or something when most of us can't be here, then we probably need to move the meeting. But if there's just a night that you can't come, then that's...
I would just be late, okay.
Which, which is totally fine.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just looking, does anyone have their action list handy? Thank you. Okay, policy assignments. Kathy, I guess we're just going to have to get back in touch with Mike.
Yeah, I think that's where, you and me and Barbara need to meet with Mike one more time, right? No?
No, we have, we have the new policy manual. The three of us have to meet to go through it.
Three of us meet.
To make sure it's what you want to bring to the full committee.
All right, right.
So we had scheduled the time.
We did, and that didn't work out.
It didn't work out, so we need to reschedule.
Okay.
Mike called today to ask about that.
Okay.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, okay, good.
To find out where we stood with it.
Perfect, timing. So why, so how about sometime in the next couple of weeks, we will sit down and get that?
Why don't I shoot both of you an email, and we'll try to set something up?
That sounds good.
Perfect, okay, great.
High school start times, Mr. Adams, it sounds like there's some activity there?
Correct. Next Wednesday, the 10th, we have our first meeting, pulling a committee together.
Okay, wonderful.
Be more than important.
Naming of school property, hopefully by our, well, we have two requests right now. One of them, we are going to assemble a committee, and the other one, by the next meeting, hopefully we'll have a plan for moving forward. Electro magnetic fields, I know that Mr. Lind gave some instruction on the opening day, so it's probably not going to be any, maybe in a, in a month or so, we can have, you let us know how that's going, as far as, we said we'd revisit in the fall, but there's probably nothing to revisit at the moment, other than...
No, the signs have been distributed to all the schools. There's a, you know, a couple of places where we're going to get a few additional signs. I know the high school needed a couple of extras and things like that, but the great majority have been created, laminated, and are being, if they're not already up, they're being put up.
Okay, so maybe in a month or six weeks, we can get a report on how that's going.
C.C. Doucette did send us an email about an activity over in Southborough at the library, talking about this very issue in schools. So it's open to the public, I think it's on the 23rd.
Of this month?
Of this month, yeah.
All right, good. Sustainability committee, we had them in last year. We talked about having them back, so hopefully we can get them in again and see where we can partner. I know they had talked about coming in and meeting with Rich and seeing where we can work with them within the curriculum. So maybe we can get that going again this year.
Absolutely.
Policy retreat, you know, not really necessary until Kathy and Barbara and I take a look at, at what we've got here. We can revisit that. Superintendent's evaluation, that was on there from, from last year. We can remove that. We can, we can add superintendent's goals, which we'll get to at some later date. Fundraising policy, we dealt with that over the summer. Some minor changes were made, and those are published in our policy manual. MCAS results, October?
Can we do October 23rd?
Sure.
They should be released, like the final number should be released in the next, actually a couple of days, I think.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, they're still embargoed.
Okay. And so October 23rd, Rich, you'll come in and make a presentation on that?
Yep.
At our next meeting, we will have a recognition of the library volunteers, so if there are any library volunteers out there watching, because we know that over a five or six-year period, there were many people that helped out in the library. And if for some reason we've lost track of emails or names, and you ever helped out in the library, you are more than welcome to come to our next meeting so that we can recognize you. We are really grateful for all the people that helped us keep our libraries going for all that time. So please join us at our next meeting for an opportunity for us to say thank you. We've had a couple of policy revisions that we've already dealt with over the, over the summer, so they can, Hall of Fame, I think it's just something that we talked about.
I need to go back to Peter's Achilles and rework the Hall of Fame policy to include athletics.
Right, and then you were going to bring something to us?
Then we'll bring it back.
Okay.
And actually Pete has reached out to me as well, so. So we're going to have just a conversation. He just wants to present, I think, what he presented to you.
Okay. And the background checks, was that just a new law, policy that we had to...
That's the new law, but I think it'll probably be covered by, by what, Mike Gilbert's not just...
Okay, so there's no, no action?
That's one of the things we'll check.
Okay. Anything else that anybody thinks that we need to add to this, or recommendations?
Is there a plan, or is there a plan to have a plan around the whole goal-setting piece? You kind of went by it, but...
Yeah, we, I talked to Jim about it. What did we say, October? Do you want to set a date, or do you want to?
If you want to set a date, go ahead.
I'm not looking to set a date. I'm looking to have a plan.
Yeah, we did talk about it, and we talked about October. Once he got, he has a, you know, an entry.
I have a job coach, and through the Massachusetts Association Superintendents and the DESE. So we're planning on, Rose DeTulio is a retired superintendent from Saguas. She will be coming to present to you one night soon, and she and I have been working through designing an entry plan, and there are very specific goals that relate to a first-year superintendent that should be a part of the goal-setting as well. And an entry plan is actually one of those goals, and following through that process. And just recently, we had a discussion yesterday, actually she was out yesterday, the MASC has, has hired an individual, and that was part of the reason we called Mike Gilbert today, to discuss goals and the evaluation of superintendents. And MASC has hired someone, according to Rose, that is specifically going to school committees discussing educator valuation or administrative valuation for superintendents. So I'll have more information on that to come as well.
Well, so that would be stuff I think we could put on future agendas, right, the fact that we want to talk about entry plans and roles and...
Yeah, that sounds good.
I do remember, Kathy, remember when we were doing the research on the goals last year, that in districts that had new superintendents, that is, it takes the place of one of the goals. That is the goal, is being involved in the superintendent induction program.
Right, correct, that is one of the goals.
Okay, anything else? All right, so do we have a motion to, oh, school committee updates?
I don't have any.
I didn't think so, that's why I wanted to end the meeting so quickly.
We have to say it.
Yes, no, you're right.
The updates, no, I don't have any.
Kathy's...
I do, do you?
Keeps us on target here.
Yeah, but I can't remember the life, oh, I went to the...
We can come back to.
No, I went to the thing that you were trying to go to, Comprehensive Plan Group. I did, I did go to that.
Oh, that's right. Oh, that's right. I did go to one of those, sorry. I went to the first one, and then did you go to the second one?
Yeah, so do you want to talk about the first one?
She just knows that she went.
Well, it was a community, they were very similar, but two different.
Yeah, what was the focus of yours?
Oh my gosh, sorry, it was back in August.
So mine was on open space and rec, I'll just say. It was on open space and recreation, but it was just sort of the whole, you know, it was, it was a large group, and we just did a lot of talk and planning. And the reason I'm bringing it up for those people who are watching is I really want to encourage people to be following the work of this Comprehensive Plan Committee, because the quality of the plan they come up with is going to be directly related to the input they get.
Right.
And we talked in that room about how the people in that room were the same people you always hear from, which is great, you know, they all have a lot of value to say, but, you know, who, what else are we not thinking of in all of that? We talked a lot about some of the, some of the vision that we all have for Ashland, and what kind of community it is, and we talked a lot about how it's a community that relies so much on cars, and we don't have good walking places. And in terms of the school piece, we talked about, you know, the lack of a sidewalk between the Ashland Middle School and the community center, which, I'm not sure, there was one piece that, you know, Tony Scavi was at the meeting, and he immediately said, well, that's in the works. I can't remember if it was that one, so I don't want to make a promise. But the point is, is there, it affects our students, you know, the fact that we, you know, kids don't have a safe way to get to school, or they can't stay late for a club if they don't have good, we do have a late bus, but understand, all of these things impact the kids in our schools. And for people who are out there who have an opinion, what, what do they want Ashland to look like in 10 years? I would really encourage them to watch for the forums that are going to be held, and to make sure that they get themselves out there and speak up.
Yes.
Is that what yours was?
Yeah, that's helpful. Yes, very much like that. The same thing, there was a group, yeah, similar, similar group, same, all of the same faces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia, for, yeah, because I went to the, it was August 5th, and then yours, I think, was August 14th.
Very good. Well, one thing I've been involved with lately is the cross-country team here at the middle school. We have a very large interest this year. I think we have over 40 participants already, and more are coming in every day, which is great. And I think we saw last year, there was a large interest even at the Mendes. I think they had about 30 kids running at the Mendes last year, so it's been exciting. I've been, Mrs. Ames has taken over the reins this year, and it's just fun to see the kids out there. And then I attended the Decisions at Every Turn meeting on Tuesday, and they're really hoping to get more parents involved in their efforts. They continue to, wow, they have quite a few events and talks that'll help parents to become more educated about and being able to talk to their children about substance abuse. And they're continuing to offer, they used to call them the community coffees, now they're calling them community conversations, where you can get a group of friends or neighbors together to meet with, I think it's Cara Turell and Kathy Bach, and talk about ways to talk to your children and become more educated... eye, eyes open for. And they've also posted the results of their parent survey on their website, and, let's see, their stand campaign starts during homecoming, I think they mentioned, and that's Students Taking a Noble Direction. Is that right? Okay, so it's a good meeting.
Can I just interject, too? At the select ones meeting last night, the chief of police gave an lifesaving award for, one of the officers used Narcan to save the life of a 24-year-old man who had overdosed on opiates. This is to underline what Gina's talking about. We, you know, my husband, we've had these conversations, but as we watched that, he said, it's hard to believe it's in Ashland. And I'm like, it's everywhere.
Yeah.
And I, I think there's a lot of people who might not know that. I think, you know, the work that decisions at every turn is doing is so important, and again, I just encourage people to pay attention.
I would go to their website, I mean, some of the talks that they have, just, it's great stuff that they're putting together. I mean, I can't wait to go attend some of them, so, especially high schoolers. But even the younger kids, just getting ready, just being aware of, you know, getting ready to have that talk, or just not even in, as in-depth as you think you would have to have that conversation with your children, but even when they're younger, and you wouldn't even think about starting it yet, and even talking about what they see on TV, or might see in a magazine, or in the newspaper, and opening up those lines of communication and understanding.
Well, that's what those community conversations are really good for. I mean, I, for anyone out there in the community that's interested in, and it's, they're actually kind of fun, because you're, you're getting together with a group of people. But I've hosted them, and I've attended them, and they're led by people who are trained, and they will tell you that not to wait to high school to have these conversations, that they need to start when the kids are much, much younger than that, and they're trained in guiding us in how to appropriately have those conversations with people at an earlier age. So, the community conversation, if you have an opportunity to either host one or attend, the few that I participated in, I really did walk away with some tools that I've used, and I found them really helpful, so.
I think the other thing that I gained from one of those is knowing that you'll have support from other parents in the community, that, you know, you're thinking along the same lines, and watching out for each other's children, and sending the same message when they're in your home or somebody else's home, so.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Gina.
Who painted the Ashland A on your driveway?
Oh, the cheerleaders, the open shots. That is the fundraiser for the high school cheerleaders. I know, when I saw that, it was just, I, you know, it's wonderful for everyone. I mean, we're all clockers, right? So, I'm so excited. Yes, I'm the first one in my neighborhood to have an A. I hope everybody else starts, you know, doing the same thing, but it's very fun. I'm very excited, I love my A.
Me, too, I like the picture.
And when is the first home football game?
Tomorrow.
Yeah?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Wow.